Isola White County School Boards in session? Madam Clerk, let's take a roll.
Mr. Colick?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Present.
Mr. Wooster? Mrs. Perkins?
Here.
And Mr. Marsh?
Here. For the listening audience, Mr. Wooster contacted me this morning and he had a late notice schedule change, so he was obligated to work this evening.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda for open session as presented.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yea.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh?
Yes, motion passes. Someone like to read the pledge, or do the pledge in a moment of silence?
Please stand for the moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thanks, sir, appreciate that. Good evening, it is February 24th, and we're in Westside Elementary School. We're here tonight for a special meeting for the presentation of Superintendent's proposed FY-26 budget.
And on that, Dr. Kramer would just roll right into it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening, Chair Marsh, members of the Board, and members of the community. First, I would like to thank everyone for their patience. As you all know, we had to adjust our budget timeline due to the snowstorm last week. The Superintendent's proposed budget presentation was originally scheduled for Thursday, February 20th, and we will revisit the budget timeline dates later in this presentation. I do wish to begin by acknowledging and thanking all who have worked on preparing the fiscal year 26, or the FY-26 proposed operating budget. I would like to start by recognizing a number of stakeholder groups who provided input and feedback as we worked to develop the FY-26 proposed operating budget. I thank my colleagues from Central Office, our Principals, our school teams, I thank the Superintendent advisories. I thank those members of the community who are providing, or who provided input, and who will continue to provide input via discussions, emails, et cetera. It is important to note, and I emphasize, that this is merely the beginning of the budget discussion. Mr. Chair and members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity to present the school division's needs in the Superintendent's FY-26 proposed operating budget. Again, I repeat and state very emphatically that this is the Superintendent's proposed budget and is merely the first public discussion of the 26 proposed operating budget. The Code of Virginia, Section 22.1-92 states that "it shall be the duty of each division superintendent to prepare with the approval of the school board and submit to the governing body or bodies appropriate funds for the school division. The estimate of the amount of money deemed to be needed during the next fiscal year, the support of the public schools of the school division." Therefore, this evening, I will present the needs of the school division. I do not know the level of funding that will be approved, but it is my responsibility per the Commonwealth of Virginia, and it is my obligation as the Isola White Superintendent to articulate the needs to the members of the school board as clearly as possible. After my presentation and as we move to the work session, members of the school division's leadership team will be prepared to elaborate on any budget requested items that are proposed and address any questions you, the school board, might have. So let's jump right in. The FY-26 budget represents the school division's plans for the activities that will take place for the school next year, school year 2025-26. The proposed operating budget provides an estimated cost to complete those activities planned for the next fiscal year. School Board members, you are certainly aware of this fact, but I note this information for members of the community, that upon review and approval or modification by the school board, a budget is submitted to the Isola White Board of Supervisors for consideration. Funds are only made available once the Board of Supervisors approves the operating budget and appropriates funds. I will repeat that last sentence. Funds are only made available once the Board of Supervisors approves the operating budget and appropriates the funds. As I aforementioned, please know that the requested proposed budget items I will share were developed through numerous meetings with students, teachers, Principals, and Central Office staff. As Superintendent, I've had meetings with members of the community, various advisory groups. My leadership team and I have attempted to include the recommendations and needs from all of these stakeholder groups, yet we have made a concerted effort to develop a budget that meets the essential needs of our schools and school division while also developing a budget that is fiscally prudent and practical. I venture to say that this is not an aspirational budget. In other words, we're not asking for resources to fund projects that are merely on our wish list. Instead, I deem this proposed operating budget to be a very fiscally responsible budget that will meet the essential needs of our students, staff, and families. I would be remiss if I fail to articulate the needs of our schools and school division based upon the extensive conversations my leadership team and I've had with stakeholder groups, and the individual conversations we've had with each of you, our school board members. Although I will attempt to share our most essential needs in this presentation, I will not endeavor, however, to share every single item. I think that through our ongoing discussions over the next few days and next few weeks, we will identify the needs and the requests of the schools and the school division. And as I stated earlier, we will have additional public discussions around the budget in the coming days and weeks. As we discuss the needs of our division and the proposed FY-26 operating budget, I think it is important for us to remind ourselves of our school division's mission and vision statement, enabling every child to discover their gifts and talents, and to ensure that each child is college, career, and life-ready. Essentially, we are saying that when our students leave our schools, they should be fully prepared to pursue whatever path they so choose. Additionally, the school division spent valuable time developing a well-thought-out strategic plan with multiple stakeholder groups, staffs, students, parents, and community members, and identified four broad areas: academic excellence, recruitment and retention of employees, family engagement, and organizational effectiveness and efficiency. It is my position that the needs we have identified and the requests we are making will help us improve in the areas as identified by our school division's strategic plan. Prior to sharing our identified needs, I will provide some State of Virginia comparison data in a few key areas. We've compiled some of these data points from the Virginia Department of Education, also known as VDOE. As most of you know, the school division is funded from three primary sources: the local government, the state government, and the federal government, and I will briefly discuss each. But before we do that, let's take a look at our community and where we stand relative to the state. I will share some of the major data indicators that are often discussed and utilized as it pertains to education funding. Let's first take a look at the Local Composite Index. The Local Composite Index determines the school division's ability to pay education costs in the Commonwealth of Virginia. The Local Composite Index is calculated by using three indicators of a locality's ability to pay. Those indicators are true value of real property, adjusted gross income, and taxable retail sales. The higher the composite index means that a locality has a greater ability to pay. And what you will see from the chart is a comparison with most of the school divisions in the area and in Region 2, which is where Isola White is listed. And what you will notice is that our ability to pay, or our composite index, at .3704 is slightly higher than most in the area and in Region 2, which means that our school division, our county, has a higher ability, or greater ability, to pay. The next chart I will share is the per pupil expenditure chart, which shows how much funding we are actually receiving per student in Isola White as compared to other school divisions in the area. You actually see somewhat of an inverse order from the previous chart. Although Isola White County has a greater ability to pay than most in the region according to our Local Composite Index, we are actually one of the lowest-funded school divisions in the region when we calculate what we actually receive from the federal, state, and local funding sources combined. The obvious question is how? I think the answers are varied, and I surmise from the data that there are a few reasons as to why that is. Let's take a look at the J-LARX study. The Virginia General Assembly directed the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission, also known as J-LARX, to study the cost of education in Virginia and make an accurate assessment of the cost of standards, of the standards of quality. The Standards of Quality SOQ Funding Formula is how the Virginia General Assembly fulfills its obligation to seek to establish and maintain a high-quality public school system. That cost is then apportioned between the state and each local government using the Local Composite Index. And it was determined that Virginia school divisions receive less K-12 funding per student than the 50-state average, the regional average, and three of Virginia's five bordering states. School divisions in other states receive more per student than school divisions in Virginia on average after normalizing for differences in cost of labor among states. In other words, state officials are telling us that the state of Virginia is underfunding our public schools. Undoubtedly, the current state SOQ funding model is obsolete and does not meet the needs of local school divisions. Additionally, it places a greater burden on local county governments in their efforts to fund our schools. I'm pleased that the J-LARX study was conducted and anxiously await an overhaul to the current SOQ state funding model. Further complicating funding matters in Isola White County is the fact that we have a higher ability to pay as a county, as determined by the Local Composite Index, as I showed earlier, which means that we receive less funding from the state than many of our neighboring school divisions who are less affluent. As a result, many of our neighboring school divisions receive more state and federal funding than does Isola White County schools, given that they have a lower composite index. As we all recall, the massive changes during the COVID-19 pandemic, all school divisions received additional federal funding to help students return to school. Those pandemic funds were referred to as the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds, or SSA funds for short. Those federal funds were certainly needed at the time, but as most of you know, those federal funds have been completely depleted and no longer exist. Because we received additional federal funds during the COVID pandemic time period, and because schools were virtual and remote for much of that time period, the county schools actually needed fewer and received fewer local county dollars. Now that we are no longer receiving additional federal COVID or SSA funds means that we will need to rely on our local county government to return to the original pre-COVID funding levels. The following pie chart slides illustrate the composition and the makeup of our Isola White County School Division's funding sources. As you will see from the 2019-2020 chart with Isola White County Schools' sources of financial support from federal, state, and local governments, you will see that prior to the pandemic, our division received 6.5% of our budget came from federal government, from the federal government in the burnt orange, 51.3% came from the state, and 42.2% of our budget in that year came from the local Isola White County government. As you will see from the next pie chart from the 2020-21 chart, which shows the funding sources for our school division, due to the federal SSA funds, you will notice in the red, the federal government's portion of our budget increased to 11.4% from 6.5%. The state's portion increased as well to 53.9%, up from 51.3%. Yet, the local Isola White County government's portion decreased to 34.7%, down from 42%. Again, in fairness to the county, this occurred because the school division needed fewer county dollars at that time, and because we were receiving more federal funding. Also, schools were not in session for some of that time period during the COVID pandemic. The 2021-22 chart shows a similar pattern of the federal government portion increasing even more to 13.9% of the school division's budget. The state, 50.5% during that year of the school division's budget. And the local county government funding was still below the original pre-COVID period, down to 35.6% of the school division's budget during that year. At the risk of being totally redundant, but I think it is important to stress this point, that the Isola White County government did nothing wrong, the division simply needed fewer county dollars during the COVID pandemic, given the additional federal ESAR dollars allocated during that time period. Now, the 2022-23 slide begins to show the first signs of the ESAR or federal funds decrease. You will see that the federal portion of the school division's budget decreased from 13.9% to 9.2%. This downward trend has continued for the 23-24 data sets and for the current year, 24-25. Although the state's data sets are not updated with the 23-24 and the 24-25 charts, we know that the funding for these years have continued to decrease. And again, the additional federal funding through ESAR have completely ended. And although the state and county's portion of the school division's budget have increased, you will also see that we are not back to the pre-pandemic funding levels. As a result, I implore the school board members and the Board of Supervisors to strongly consider returning the school division's operating budget funding level to the original pre-pandemic funding levels, given that we no longer have federal ESAR or COVID dollars. The previous slides showed the breakdown of the school division's Isola White County Schools' operating budget as funded by the federal, state, and local governments. The current slide shows the Isola White County government's budget and how much of that budget is allocated to the school division. As you will see, we received approximately 35% of the county's operating budget in FY-2019 and FY-2020 prior to the pandemic. As the chart shows, we continue to receive less of a percentage of the county's budget during the years when we received more federal funding during the pandemic. Again, because of the additional federal funding and the additional dollars, we needed fewer county dollars. This is not surprising, and these trends are consistent in many, if not most, counties throughout the state and the country. As you will see from the current chart, the portion of funding we currently receive from the county's budget is 30.86%, which is down from the pre-COVID period, which was at the, at that time, 35.62%. Currently, we are receiving approximately 5% less than we received prior to the pandemic. And although these percentages might appear to be relatively small, when we're considering large budgets of approximately $100 million or more, each percent represents approximately $1 million. Most importantly, what I hope to illustrate are two key points. First, the county funding changes were understandable and justifiable, and no one did anything wrong. I hope that everyone hears that, no one is to blame. And it is understandable that we received fewer local dollars, given the increased funding the school division received from the federal government. Moving forward, however, it is important to emphasize that those additional dollars are completely gone, and that leads to my second important key point. Without the additional federal COVID or ESAR dollars, and with the state admittedly underfunding our school divisions in the state, it is critically important and urgent that we receive the percent of the county's operating budget that we received prior to the pandemic. I implore both our school board members and our Board of Supervisors to please take these data points into consideration when we consider funding the Isola White County School Division. Board members, I am sure we will have further discussions around this matter in the days and weeks to come. As it pertains to the budget request for fiscal year 26, I will certainly not endeavor to share every single request in my presentation. Those detailed requests will be shared via multiple formats to the Board and to the community. Nonetheless, I will share some of the most significant needs and priorities for our school division. I will start with some of the absolute required needs. We are projecting a reduction in revenue due primarily to receiving fewer dollars as a result of decreasing, decreases in the usage of our schools by community organizations and fewer state basic aid dollars. As this slide is titled, Required Changes in Expenses, these are the amounts that are required for next school year, FY-26. The estimated amount for the 3% employee raises is $781,003. The estimated increase for our healthcare fund is $1,663,491. And the local textbook match increase of $309,798. And the already negotiated increases for purchase services is $84,688. As you will notice, approximately half of our requests are required just to maintain our school division. More specifically, the raises in healthcare expenses are consuming the majority of our requests. In the current slide titled Discretionary Changes in Expenses, we're asking for additional positions to mainly meet the needs in special education, career technical education, CTE, and safety and security. The current slide shows the overall amount of the required needs, which are an absolute must to maintain the operation of the school division. And it shows what we have termed the discretionary needs, which are still very important. Board members, as you are aware, the less essential discretionary needs were cut by staff and by me since our last meeting with you, the school board, in individual meetings or in our 221 meetings. As a result, we have already reduced items that are important, but were not deemed to be as essential by either you, the school board, or by our staff, given our initial discussions. In the following slides, we will unpack and further discuss some of the specific budgetary requests. Let's start with the essential 3% salary increase. As it pertains to compensation for FY-26, we're requesting a 3% salary increase for our educators. The Virginia General Assembly and the Governor have proposed a 3% salary increase to support our teachers and other educators in the division. The 3% raise is not just a matter of fairness, it is an investment in the future of Isola White County. It is no secret that Virginia continues to face significant teacher shortages in public schools, similar to many other school divisions in many other states. This modest increase in teachers and other educators' salaries offers a far-reaching benefit that extend beyond the classroom, such as recognition of their dedication, and will help to improve retention and recruitment efforts. We will continue to prioritize our educators and ensure that they receive the compensation they deserve. Health and wellness for staff is also a top priority. Having access to comprehensive health coverage not only promotes physical and mental health, but also promotes a healthy learning and work environment. By increasing the budget for the healthcare fund, the school board is able to mitigate increasing health costs and avoid passing the additional cost on to our employees. To help health plan premiums, to help keep health plan premiums affordable for staff and for our families, we will need additional funding in this area. It is important to note, however, that we've not received a health insurance renewal yet, so these increases are preliminary, and we will get you those more accurate projections in the days to come. The CTE positions are necessary to support expanded programs, such as the Governor's Lab School, the Isle Maritime Trades Academy, to support and improve existing CTE programs, and to provide additional supervision to ensure student safety in work-based learning environments, and in this case specifically for the welding program. We are requesting funding for our reading and math interventionist positions. This year, we received a reduction in Title I funding. We moved two reading intervention positions to our All-In Virginia grant from the Governor. Moving forward, there will not be enough grant funds to cover these two positions. Our students continue to need the services of our reading interventionists. Without these positions, approximately 100 students would lose these very important services. We're asking for library assistants for our elementary schools to provide support, management, and facilitate chrome book loans to students as needed. Additionally, the assistant will handle book checkouts and restock shelves during student visits to the library. Currently, the librarian attempts to juggle these numerous tasks, which is overwhelming for one person, as the librarian teaches resource classes daily and is faced with the constant rotation of classes. Lastly, in the absence of the librarian, the assistant will step in to teach classes, ensuring continuity and instruction without the need to secure substitute teachers. We're requesting two additional school security officers, SSOs, to assist with the expansion of our weapons detection systems at the high school level. And the additional SSOs will enhance our ongoing efforts to make our schools as safe as possible. We're also requesting support in our human resources department. We are understaffed in that department. To properly support employees in our division, it is recommended that there be no less than one HR staff member per 100 employees in an organization. For Isola White, that ratio would be 800 to 8, but we're staffed at 800 to 3.5, less than half of what is recommended for a school division our size. As we all know, retention and recruitment demands are continuing to grow as the pool for education applicants decreases. I don't think it's any secret that our school division is one of the lower-paying school divisions in the region as it pertains to many of our educator groups. Therefore, we are requesting additional funding to enhance the pay for several of these educator groups to help make us more competitive as a school division in terms of pay. Or at a minimum, it allows us to not lose ground, or at least not as much ground, with our neighboring school divisions. Although staff members too often take a pay cut to come work in Isola White County, we can absolutely not depend on that in future years. Yes, we have a very desirable community to live in and a very good school division to work in, but the cost of living continues to go up, and we owe our employees a fair and comparable compensation package. And we certainly do not want to lose quality staff to other counties because of low pay and non-competitive benefits packages. As you will see from this chart, most of the increases in pay pertains to our instructional aides, IAs, for kindergarten and special education programs. Again, these increases will help make us a little more competitive in pay and will help with the retention and recruitment of staff. We're requesting to increase supplemental pay and stipends for our handle with care staff, CPR training, school security officers for game coverage, and school leadership team stipends. As you will recall from last year, we received one-time funding for several important projects through the Capital Improvement Plan, or the CIP. Therefore, we are requesting some one-time funding for the CIP items, which are one-time non-recurring requests, which exceed $50,000. I extend a huge thank you to our Board of Supervisors and to you, our Board, for the generous funding in last year's CIP budget, in the CIP budget. We received funding last year for HVAC repairs at Carrollton Elementary, additional buses, funding for new high school tracks and fields, and weapons detection systems at the high school level. Although we received significant CIP funding last year, some of the much-needed items were not able to be funded last year. Therefore, we're adding those requests to the current year's request with a few new additional requested needs. Some of the one-time CIP requests for FY-26 are a much-needed upgrade to our Fleet Services Building, which is where our buses are serviced and maintained. The current building was constructed between 1952 and 1955. The structure is not large enough to accommodate modern buses. As a result, the facility remains to be open to the elements during vehicle service and repair, which places fleet service workers in an inferior, unacceptable working environment. With an interior working height of only 12 feet, it is not possible to fit this structure with modern lifts for inspecting vehicles, which means all repairs and inspections must be performed on the ground. Additionally, the buses do not fit in this structure, which exposes- Additionally, the buses do not fit in this structure, which exposes our employees to extreme weather conditions. Board members, I think you would agree that we owe our fleet services staff a building that is first and foremost safe, and one that allows our employees to perform their work in a sufficient work environment that is out of the elements during the harsh winters and the extreme heat in the summer. We're asking and still need more buses. As you may recall, approximately one in three of our buses have exceeded their expected lifespan of 15 years or over 300,000 miles. Although we were funded five buses last year, we know that we still need additional buses for the next several years to get us up to par with our bus acquisition rotation. Safety is and will continue to be a top concern for me as superintendent. As a result, we're asking for additional weapons detection systems for our middle schools to enhance safety in our school division. We've also heard from our band students, our parents and staff regarding band needs. One of those needs pertains to upgrades to the Smithfield High Band Room, which we will gladly discuss in more detail as we proceed. So to summarize some of the major areas of need, as we look at the needs we have identified in the requests we are submitting to meet those needs, you will see that the needs exist in critically important areas, which are consuming the vast majority of the '26 proposed operating budget. Therefore, our requests are in those areas to meet the identified needs. The numerous facility and infrastructure needs, the 3% raise that is recommended by the Virginia General Assembly and the governor, our transportation needs, our special education needs, career technical education, CTE needs as our programs grow, the instructional needs and the additional resources for safety and security to ensure that our students and staff are as safe as possible. There's no question, board members, that this investment comes with a cost. Again, we are asking for one-time funding for facility infrastructure upgrades for essential items such as school buses, fleet services, much-needed renovations, and additional security enhancements, to mention some of the needs. And one additional much-requested initiative is for after-school programs. If funded next year, this will enable our school division to provide transportation for each school at least one day per week for elementary schools and a few days per week for secondary schools. This will also provide a stipend for staff who will work to support our after-school programs. This would ensure that all students have access to after-school activities, given that transportation will be provided. The programs would potentially support after-school clubs, activities, mentoring, and sports, for example. It could also allow students to be tutored after school and would allow for other possibilities for our students. As you all know, board members, the vast majority of our budget costs are to pay for salaries and benefits for our employees. There is not a lot of room for discretionary spending. Thus, we are required to be very prudent as we request funds for other needed areas. As I conclude my presentation, I contend that the request I've offered in my presentation on behalf of the many voices I represent with this proposed budget is an investment in our students, staff, and our community. I assert that you are not just spending taxpayer-well-earned dollars, board members, but you're investing money in our children and in the entire Isla White community. And what do I mean by that statement? I mean that where you have great communities, where people desire to live and work, you will always find very good schools. Thriving schools is one of the major reasons people are attracted to and move to this community. I venture to say that our quality of living will remain high, and your property values will continue to increase if we maintain very good schools. But to maintain very good schools, we need the county's investment to ensure that we are properly funded. According to the Weldon Cooper Center at the University of Virginia, in their recently released study, which was shared in the Smithfield Times, showed that Isla White County continues to be one of the fastest-growing counties in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Many individuals are choosing to live and work in Isla White County, and they desire to send their children to our schools by and large. If that trend is to continue, board members, and my dear community members, then I implore you to invest in our schools, as I'm confident you will. We all know that the budget process is very fluid. Board members, you may ask us to remove items from the proposed budget and/or you may ask us to place items in the budget before you, the board, take a final vote. And we are fully prepared to respond to the board's adjustments as instructed. Again, for all who are watching, the superintendent must develop the budget with staff, but the school board must adopt and approve the budget. And further, the Board of Supervisors must ultimately fund the budget. As you look at the budget calendar, this evening, February 24th, there is the School Board Budget Presentation and the beginning of the work session. On February 27th, there's another School Board Budget Work Session. March 6th will be the public hearing. March 13th is our regularly scheduled board meeting, and on March 18th, the board will vote to approve the budget. The caveat certainly is some of these dates can change based upon the board's determination. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation. I thank you, Chairman Marsh and members of the board. At this time, I will ask our leadership team to move to the table and prepare, along with other staff members, to respond to any questions you, the school board, might have for our FY '26 proposed operating budget.
Thank you, sir. We'll give you guys a chance to get settled, and we'll move forward. All right, so figure out how we want to proceed to my colleagues up here. It's a lot to digest. And I know Mr. Rooster isn't here tonight, and we're going to have a lot of question and answering coming up here Thursday evening. I guess we'll just open it up. Anybody want to kick it off?
Do you have anything to say? Ms. Coughlin, you want to go?
Yeah, like you said, Mr. Chair, there's a lot to digest here, so I'm not going to be prepared to ask a lot of detailed questions tonight. But I do have a couple pretty minor questions that I think Dr. Kramer can answer pretty easily. So we talked about impact aid in your slides, and it looks like we're having a loss of some funds. So my question is, do we, without the impact aid statements from the individual families, do we have an idea of how many military families that we do have in a community and who we're missing any of them forms from?
Sure.
Yes, we did not get as great of a response this year as we have in years past. So we do have students that are registered in our system as being of military families, but they did not return the survey. And when I apply for the impact aid, I can only, you know, put in the numbers of the actual surveys we received back.
Sure.
I am going to be looking at doing an online survey this coming year, so hopefully we'll get a bigger response.
Okay, and if we know that there's children whose parents are in the military and they don't send something back, it could be because, you know, mom's working full-time, dad's deployed, or the other way around. So if we can go, is it possible for us to go back and remind them?
Yes, we are doing that. We're going back to the schools, and when I filed my application, I did let them know that we will likely be amending it by June 30th.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you.
Just a follow-up. We have had the schools reach out to the parents to ask them to return it. We still have not had the success we hoped for. So they've been doing phone calls and sending other messages.
Thank you, Ms. Getz. So my next question's on healthcare. As you know, I had asked for, you know, all the statistics on the current year's healthcare program, and I'd really like to see as soon as we get it, next year's healthcare, because I want to make sure we're in line, you know, with the employee share, you know, with the My gut says that maybe our employees may be paying a little bit more for somebody insurance than in other places, and considerably less in some insurances. So I'll definitely have questions on that when that comes out, because I want to make sure we're fair across the board and we're kind of comparable to the rest of the community, particularly Isla White County employees.
I have developed two new schedules that show more of a clearer breakdown on them than what I had sent you, so we'll get those out to you tomorrow.
Beautiful.
To all of the board. And it gives also what I have projected for the upcoming year, but keep in mind, we have not received our renewal yet.
Right, right. Thank you. My next question, I don't know if we've got this yet, is the cost of living, the national cost of living, you know, for the current year, what it's projected to be. Because 3%, if we've got a cost of living of 3.5%, we're not even keeping up, you know? And so I really want to get a good feel for that, because I don't want to say, hey, we're able to keep our employees 1% behind this year, you know? I want to see if we can try and get our employees ahead. Okay, so that's kind of important to me.
May I respond?
Yes.
Ms. Coughlin, thank you for that really important point. And certainly, that's something we're looking at, is to look at those national averages. But I think to your point, not only are we looking at national averages, I think it's important that we look at being competitive locally.
Absolutely.
Because to your point, if we are just providing an increase, but our neighboring jurisdictions are providing a more significant increase, we're not even keeping up locally. So that's something we certainly need to be paying attention to.
Yeah, and I think my last comment right now would be on the nurses' pay. We still need to have a sit-down at some point, you know, with the nurse supervisor and, you know, Ms. Sullivan and yourself, Dr. Coleman. But I would really like to make sure we are competitive with our nurses' pay with the other surrounding jurisdictions, okay? I get it, the nurses aren't in the ER, they're not going to be paid $45, $50 an hour, okay? They're not in a doctor's office, so they're not going to be paid, you know, on the most part $30 an hour. But the comment that was made at the last school board meeting, we're getting around $19 an hour, and I don't know how accurate that is, but I think, you know, for me, that's kind of low, particularly for, you know, somebody with an advanced degree in nursing, whether it's a BSN or a master's, you know, maybe they should get a little bit more. So that's something I still want to explore. I do think just looking at it without any research, that the amount that we're looking at for 16 nurses is low, and so that's a number that I really want to look at very closely.
Before you move on, may I respond to that as well?
Yes, Dr. Kramer, please.
And I'm sure you and the board members would agree with me. We're certainly looking at the nurses, and I think it's also important to note that we are paying attention to all of our educator groups. So we, you know, whether they are speaking at public hearing or not, we are looking at where we are with all of our groups to ensure that across the board, we have competitive pay and competitive benefits packages for all of the groups, and I applaud our team for that.
You are 100% spot-on. I feel that way for everyone at workforce. They should all be getting very competitive pay within their professions. So I agree with that, Dr. Kramer. Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vary, on the slide that Dr. Kramer briefed, title was Required Changes in Expenses.
Can you do it? I was going to ask you which number slide that was, Mr. Chair, but you have the single page there.
I don't know. Keep going. Keep going. Right there. So the top line, the 3% pays with benefits, the $781,000, is that local match or is that total?
That's the total increase in expenses from budget to budget.
Okay.
So there were some other changes, and I did come across where something might have been budgeted twice last year, so, because that's really not the true cost of a 3% pay increase, but that's the change from budget to budget.
Okay.
You know, to identify whether or not that's the local match or the one provided by SOQ, you know, we don't really separate those out.
Right, but that is the total delta between proposed and current year?
Yes, sir.
Got it. Because I don't have page numbers.
We actually have them here, so.
It's okay, it's okay. I prefer to go off the book anyways. Bear with me. Goodness gracious. There we go. Page six of the book. We're talking about average daily membership. I know there's no simple answer to this, and to be fair, I called Dr. Kramer this afternoon and told him I was going to ask this, but I think it's fair to ask, especially for the people watching. Given that our average daily membership was flat between '21 and '22 for the most part, it decreased in '23, and we're projecting it decrease again this year. Given that the student enrollment or the average daily membership decreases, how do we justify to the average person watching an increase in funding requests? And I know there's no, it's a big answer, but I wanted to get that out there.
May I take the first opportunity to respond to that? Sir, I'm going to ask Mr. Coop, if you would take us to Slide 6. There, thank you, sir. So as is shared in the presentation, we are one of the lowest-funded school divisions in Region 2 and in the area. I think last year, we were third from the bottom. This year, we're second from the bottom. So when you look at federal, state, local funding, when it's combined, we are second from the bottom. I would venture to say that if these bars represented our academic scores, we would be up in arms. People would have an issue, and they should. I would say, sir, we have gotten used to getting along with less. A number of these positions, as I look on the four-page sheet on Page 2 of 4, a number of these positions, we don't have insufficient numbers. We talked about human resources, and no intent to embarrass Mrs. Sullivan, but we mentioned that a fair staffing ratio would be 100 to 1. We're not even close to that. Our reading interventionist and some of the other positions that we do not have in all of our schools, our SSOs, we do not have insufficient numbers. Our library assistants, positions that I will tell you are standard in many school divisions and school systems in this country, we don't have. I shared with you that our funding has gone down since the pandemic and has not come back up. Shared with you the federal funding is decreasing, ESER funds are completely gone. I shared that the state acknowledges that they're underfunding our school divisions, plural, and our funding has not returned locally. So we are doing without, we are already understaffed in many ways, and we're underfunded. So I would argue that we're asking for more just to get up to par. We have people who are doing extra work because we're understaffed in so many ways already. And this will only be exacerbated if we do not get the funding we need this year. Mrs. Getz, Mrs. Sullivan, if you would like to venture a response, please feel free to.
Great question. As a taxpayer, I would probably be asking the same question.
I think everything Dr. Kramer said, yes, reiterate. But I would also add that while it is a projection, we don't know for sure, it is a projection. The needs of our students are not decreasing, not by a long shot. So when we talk about reading intervention, without those two positions, that would be a hundred kids possibly not receiving reading intervention services. And that's direct pullout services, working directly with kids all day, every day to improve, you know, early, you know, first, you know, kindergarten, first, second, third grade students in their reading, which we all know that is one of the most important things that we do in a school division, teach children to read. So again, the needs are not decreasing. Also, when you look at special education, the special education students that we are seeing have more and more severe disabilities and they continue to come. Our pre-case students, again, significant disabilities and they often require self-contained classrooms. So when you look at the request for special education teachers, it is for those classrooms. And and by law, we have limits on where we can be in those classrooms. Yes?
Because I don't want to lose that thought. Are the special education, the self-contained requirements, are those captured in the SOQ chart? Are they SOQ positions?
It it's hard to answer that question because we're so inadequately funded by SOQ. Is that in there?
So there is a section for SOQ under that, however, that does not by any means capture the needs of our school division. Because when SOQs are being allocated, it's based on your ADM, which does not take into any consideration the percentage of your students who are in need in need of special education, nor does it take into account the number of service minutes that those students need. So there's no way for them to say, this is how many special education teachers your division needs, because they don't know our kids nor do they look at any of that to understand that.
And I, thank you. And I think to your point, I guess we'll back up, earlier last year, we had that special education presentation. Because we identified early on that that demand was increasing. But I think to kind of make your points, on page of, page eleven for special education aides, we're SOQ funded for ten point three-six people. I'm not quite sure what three-six, point three-six of a person is.
Not sure.
But you're asking for sixty-eight. So that, I mean, that right there is a is a huge delta, that's fifty-seven point six people difference, so that that's a lot, that's significant.
It is. But you could not function and no school division is functioning with just SOQ positions. It's not possible.
Right.
And the state acknowledges as much.
And that's because that was the point I was trying to make.
And then I would also add, just kind of what I've already said, but IMTA. So it's Governor Youngkin's Lab Schools, we were granted with one, IMTA is going to be great for our community. But it is a huge undertaking and we want it to be a success. We want all of our CTE programs to be a success. So when you add that huge additional responsibility, it then says, well, who's going to be responsible for it? If you keep spreading it around among many, many people, the job is not going to get done to where we need it to.
Mr. Chair, may I revisit your question regarding ADM and I think Ms. Getz hit on something that's very important. I think we need to be careful with looking at the numbers going down. The ADM has been inaccurate since I've been here from the state's projections. So I stated that Weldon Cooper has stated that we have been one of the fastest growing counties for the past several years and that continues. And we see all of the growth in this county. I think a number of school divisions and systems throughout the country have seen fewer students return to their school divisions since the pandemic. But I don't think we can bank on that. At any point, those numbers can increase significantly. So with all the growth and I, if I were to name the projects, you would all know them and see enormous growth occurring here. So yes, our ADM projections have been stagnant and they've fluctuated somewhat. But again, I wouldn't bank on the fact that our student enrollment numbers will continue to be low or to be stagnant. I would venture to say those numbers are going to be increasing and we have seen some data sets that will indicate as much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Ms. Sullivan, put you on the spot here, on page nine of the book. Where does HR fall on this SOQ chart? Is, are you administration administrative?
Um, yes, so that's some of, well, some of my department's positions fall under administration, administration administrative and then some follow under administration, technical, clerical, just depending on the classification of that individual's job.
Okay. And again, just for pointing out some of the obvious, it's it's interesting that we're not funded for a superintendent. It's crazy. If we could roll back, I think it's slide twelve, I'm guessing, it was the one with the the line graph. Just a couple of things, and again, I I think I'm restating the obvious for my colleagues up here, but for the for the listening audience, it's worth pointing out that in FY twenty-three, I don't think it's coincidental that that just happens to be the same year we had a deficit. So certainly that had some sort of a, an influence on that, among many other things. But then if you look at FY twenty-four, yep, we're still below the COVID level. But I think we'd be remiss if we didn't point out that last year we got nine point five million from the county and local funds for capital improvement and that's huge. It's huge. And and again, we're asking for more stuff that didn't get picked up last year. So while I think this is important, it's also worth pointing that out. At some point, I think, Dr. Kramer, you said that one percent was about a million dollars there and about?
I was just making a, just a very broad prediction because I think the county's budget is over hun- one hundred million this coming year.
Do, Ms. Verri, do you know, I know you work with the county finance folks quite a lot. I heard the number thrown around last year, it was if memory serves, it was about six hundred thousand dollars in the county's budget equated to a one cent real estate tax. Is that, is that about the same?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Because I'm sure we'll hear that again. I know Dr. Coleman's sitting over there patiently waiting for me to pick on him.
Chairman Marsh, it's actually six hundred seventy thousand four hundred.
Okay, thank you. Six seventy. I don't have it. Let's see, towards the tail end of the slide deck where the capital things are listed. There's the chart or the spreadsheet, we've got an initial ranking. And then there's the following slide. One more. All of these, I do believe, with the exception of one, is a carryover from our last, asked from last year, is that correct, Dr. Coleman?
That is correct.
So every one of these items, with the exception of the band room, is something we asked for last year. And if memory serves, again, last year we initially had, it was a crazy amount of money, it was fourteen million or something like that, we'd asked for in capital funds. And we were blessed to get nine and a half million. Again, we're asking for more stuff and I don't expect that we're going to get ten point six million. But the point I'm trying to make is these were carryovers from last year except for one. Can you tell us about the one new thing?
The band room.
Yes, sir.
And looking at all of the capital improvement plans and all of the items that we did were fortunate to get last year. Like for everyone just to keep in mind, these are twenty, twenty-five to thirty-year projects that that we actually were able to get through. The seven point five million dollar HVAC project for Curlton, that will last the county twenty to twenty-five years. The new tracks, that are fifteen to maybe twenty years in motion. So the items that are on the CIP is not only for the schools, but also for the community also. And just like everyone to keep that in mind. Now focusing on the band room, of course, you already know that the band room was built in nineteen eighty-two and along with the school and hasn't had an upgrade or any sort of renovation since then. So with an expanding band and at one time the band was up to seventy-five individuals in the band. One thing that we're looking for now is the storage of uniforms and instruments and music. Growing the band even more. The practice rooms, most up-to-date bands at this time, they have practice rooms and things of that nature that kids can expand out to. We don't have that at this time. And just keep in mind that averaging right now, the band sends two, at least two individuals to college on partial scholarships, at least two every year. Not saying that only two individuals go, but on partial scholarships, those are our kids going off to college to further their skills from the band. And that's right now. Of course, it will be expanding in the future, so more to come. So just to give you a little bit of background on the one item that is not, was not on the CIP list from last year.
The reason I wanted to bring that up is because this is my third budget season sitting up here. In the last two, we had some pretty passionate folks that came up here advocating on behalf of the band.
Yes.
So my point of drawing attention to this is that the band room has made the list. So we'll see how it pans out, you know, we're not guaranteed any funding until we
Mr. Chair, I think it made the list prior to our our arrival. I think the band has been a request
For years.
Many years, yes.
Can you tell us a little bit about the the project itself? This is something you came up with.
Well, it's something that the operations team actually came up with and working with instruction and the principal. Allocating space and trying to really take the space that we already have and make more out of that. And that's when we came across the boiler room on the backside of Smithville High School. And in this boiler room, they were, we're using it as more of storage. And of course, it was the older boilers and the older heaters and different things of that nature. Three years ago, Smithville High School changed over the heating and cooling system to more of HVAC units on the roof. I think it's maybe seventeen, eighteen units. So then the boiler room became obsolete. So at that time, you've had a maybe twenty yards long, fifteen yards tall boiler in a room outside just being used for storage. So taking everything out of that room, getting rid of all of those items in that room and just clearing it out gave us an ideas of maybe more storage. And then working along with instruction and once again, the principal of the school started thinking of the ideas of what else could this room be used for? And that's when we went full force, started thinking about allocation of maybe using it for another band room, which is bigger. The room is larger than the current band room and will have more space. Space that we can actually break out into those different areas that we discussed a little earlier.
Thanks, Doc. Anybody else?
When you're done.
Go for it. I need a break.
Well, I don't need information right now, but I am going to want information on the textbook funds, where we're getting those numbers from. What it is, what it's used for, because they're carrying around laptops now and so just an explanation of where we're getting those numbers. Training and travel, those numbers seem a little high for a couple of areas, so I want some information on that. What is necessary, what is more of a want instead of a need in that category? We do have some SOQ positions that are a little bit off. Some information, especially, I know the public's going to want to, some details on that. We've covered a lot, but if we could have anything that is going to kind of be a red flag when people look through these slides, make sure we have that information. We have all-in with the funding question.
If you could just give me a little bit more clarity about the SOQ so I can provide the information for you that you're looking for?
Well, obviously, special ed is a huge one. With the numbers changing, have we reassessed? And are, do we have the people where they need to be and, you know, are we moving people around as needed? That kind of stuff. And anywhere else, like you have assistant principals, we have more than what SOQ is saying, IAs. So there's just various areas in there where the numbers are off. We, you could just explain kind of why a little bit. And we've already gone over some of it. But maybe having something on paper that people can review or whatever would be nice. All-in, I know the funding is changing for that. How long have we had all-in in the schools? Has that just been since the grant funded it?
Yes, this is the second year and whatever is not spent can carry over for next year. It will be some funds, not going to be a lot substantial like we have right now. And then that will be it.
Okay. And, Dr. Coleman, if I can have a breakdown of where you're getting the numbers from for the band room and the cost? Not right now, but. Thanks.
Okay, so I'm looking at, let me see. The proposed new positions and changes in pay. For SSOs, looking at this, we're looking at getting, trying to get two more or two additional SSOs. Which is good. I think we need more, but to the start, because we're looking at the two middle schools, correct?
Actually, no, these would be for the high schools. So it would give a team of three at Smithfield High School and a team of two at Windsor High School with the implementation of the weapons detection system. Right now, we're able to implement that fairly well at Windsor High School, Smithfield's starting it soon. While during arrival, however, during the rest of the day when we have visitors coming into the building, there is not a person able to man that system. Otherwise, they then would not be available to provide security to the rest of the building. They would just be sitting at that one door waiting for arrival of guests. And so this is in place to allow someone to man that system during the day. Otherwise, you're just scanning students and not other people who may arrive during the school day for weapons.
Okay.
Before you move on, I want to acknowledge your point. I think your point is well taken and I think it shows that we have been very conservative in our request, because otherwise, we probably would have asked for middle school as well.
Yep.
That need does exist, but again, we have been very conservative in our request. Perhaps to our chagrin, but I want to acknowledge your point.
Yeah, because, yeah, I'm looking at it, I'm also looking at the CIP where we're looking at additional weapon detection systems, it's a hundred and eighty thousand, is that for two or is that for one? I'm thinking, is that two?
Yes, both of those weapon detection systems are for the middle school.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But is it two per school?
It is.
So the a hundred, all right, basically, real simple, for a hundred and eighty thousand, are we getting two systems or one or?
You're going to get for a hundred and eighty thousand, I can check on this, but you're getting, no, it's more than two. It's going to be, and I hate to throw that out there, I think it's going to be eight systems.
Okay, because
Yeah.
Because that's what, you know, citizens are going to be asking, what, four hundred and eighty thousand, what are we getting?
And Mr. Cunningham, if you can just allow me to bring that exactly out.
You don't have to tell me right now.
Right.
You know, and that's for, I'm interested, but also citizens are going to be interested. What are we getting for our money?
Absolutely.
I mean, a lot of these figures on here, I think is, it's being conservative and I know we have to do that due to the budget. But people are going to want to know what, okay, if we agree with this, what do we okay, if we agree with this, what are we getting? But then if we do get the, whatever number of systems, we are going to need more SSOs. So, you know, it's one of those things where we'd be, I know we're being conservative, very conservative, and we have to due to money crunch, but that's, I mean, how lean can we be? I mean, my, my priority is safety of the kids, of all the students, staff. Something happens, I don't want to be reactive, I want to be proactive. So, and I, and I'm hoping, and, and I'm sure the board of supervisors is proactive also. I understand, everything's lean, but, but there are things happening, and probably things are going to happen in the future with the state of the United States as it is. You know, we need to be proactive on what we're doing just in case. It's like an insurance policy. Understand, insurance goes up too, but you got to have it. I mean, it is what it is. So I'll get off of my soapbox. Those are the questions I had, so, thank you.
Now, Mr. Cunningham made a few very good comments here. You know, the, first, the people want to know, okay, what are we spending our money on? The second is safety, okay? Safety, I think, has been this board's priority since day one. Now, probably a little bit late this year, but we want to go in and we want to ask the board of supervisors for a level of funding consistent throughout the years. We've got to have some good justification to go in and say, hey, let's have this agreement, we want 35%, you know, of what the county brings in in taxes. I, I think what we need to do, and something we haven't done since I've been on the board, is maybe start out next year, and I won't be on the board then, but with a zero-based budget. If we can go from, we've got nothing on, on the plate, and start putting, okay, we got these first grade teachers, you know, this is how much each one of them's going to make, and, and just go down every position, every line item, and I know it's going to be very hard work, but we might find in there some places we can save money, you know? And I know I mentioned it a week or two ago when we met, that maybe we can buy some things in bulk to save a few pennies here and there, because if we save the nickels and dimes, the dollars will save themselves. Okay? So I, I'm a big proponent of the zero-based budget, and I think we might be able to help shore ourselves up a little bit, find a little bit extra money. And where we can't, now we go to the board of supervisors. We have tried to save, we have looked at every single line, this is what we absolutely have to have, to have the best schools in the area, to continue a world-class education, and have a very safe environment for our students, our staff, our employees, and our visitors. So, just put that in the back of your minds for next year, I, I think that's going to be very important. But, you know, right now, we're working on this. My questions will be coming to you in the next few days. Thank you.
Can we talk a little bit about page 37 of the book, the health fund? So I know, Mr. Derry, you've been keeping a close eye on this all year. You had some concerns early on. But if I'm interpreting the proposal correctly, we're looking at including our, Iowa County Schools' contribution by 1.9 million, and reducing the employees' contribution by 150,000, which is basically flat, I would imagine, if you divvy that up plus or minus 800 employees. I, I think that's important to point out, that that's a, while that doesn't come in the employees' paycheck, that's certainly a benefit, because, you know, insurance is insurance, somebody just said it. My homeowner's insurance went up, my auto insurance went up, everything goes up. So what we're proposing here is certainly a benefit to the employees as well.
Yes, sir. And we are, currently, we are proposing that the employee sees no change in their current premiums that they pay. That's what we have proposed here.
Right. Okay. I guess we could sit here all night, but we've got Thursday for this. There's one thing that I do want to present to my colleagues up here, as well as Dr. Kramer. With the assistance of our esteemed school board clerk, she should, I want to make sure I say this right. This budget, once approved, is the school board's budget. But within that budget, we have some very specific line items that are allocated solely to the school board. Professional services, staff development, travel, training, mileage, dues and membership, supplies, so on and so forth. Food. To the grand total, we're budgeted $61,500. Again, Mrs. Whitlow helped me put this together, and I suspect she may have had some assistance, I don't know. All you, that's why you're number one. So I've shared a hard copy with my colleagues, and I'll give one to you, Dr. Kramer. Between now and the next handful of days, I'd like to get together and look at somewhere, some places where we can trim this off and reappropriate it somewhere else. $61,500 is what we're budgeted for FY24, '25. To date, and it's February, so we're not done, we've spent about $37,000, almost $38,000. I'm sorry. We've spent $23,700. So there's quite a bit, I, I suspect we're going to have some excess. I'd like to get together and figure out where we could repurpose that funds. A part of that excess is because we backed out of the VSBA. And then I know that in July, June, whenever we voted to leave the SB, the VSBA, we had discussed leaving those funds in the budget for the sake of policy and legal fees, potential legal fees. So, I'm not suggesting we make it all go away, because we still don't have a policy services, but I think there's room for reallocation. So that, as well as the H2O to go, and I know that's not a popular conversation with some of the staff. But the fact that we're funded or budgeted for $7,500 for bottled water, I'd like to look at a way to take some of that, put it somewhere else. I don't care if it's a field trip or an SSO, we'll figure out where. I think we can use those funds better somewhere else. And I'm getting the mean looks from some. That's okay. I take them. What are we missing here? Okay. Yeah, for sure. Digest it, the next couple of days, we're scheduled to be back here Thursday. Five o'clock again? Five o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wooster will be here on Thursday, I know he'll have a, a deck of questions. And then after that, we've got our public hearing. Just march forward like we, like we know what we're doing. That's what my aunt would say. Anything else, Doc? Staff?
That is it. Thanks for the opportunity to present. We look forward to the ongoing discussions.
Okay. Call us adjourned.